The magic words. Let's stand for the flag of allegiance. And for the agents to supply of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the regular city council meeting for July first, twenty twenty five. Do a quick roll call here, Councilmember Pritchard.
Here.
Councilmember Shaefer.
Present.
Councilmember Spears.
Present.
Councilmember Maxwell.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Present.
Councilmember Harvolt.
Here.
And Councilmember Kennedy was excused by Council. Our last meeting, thank you. Approval of the agenda. Any changes or additions to the agenda? I'll entertain a motion then.
So moved.
Second. Thank you, any discussion there? All in favor?
Aye.
Me opposed, agenda accepted as submitted. Opportunity for interested citizens to comment, I'll answer requests and comments, there will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting as well. Anyone in the audience have anything they'd like to discuss online, any of the folks online have anything they would like to discuss? Alright, you'll have another opportunity if something comes to mind during the meeting. Announcement, proclamations, and special presentations. Should I do the appointments? Oh no, that's actually on the agenda, isn't it?
It's seventy.
Seventy, thank you. I don't know of any other, any other announcements, proclamations, or special presentations, so we'll move on. Can't believe what a light event we have, it's very nice. Moving to reports, committee reports, Councilmember Pritchard, any committee reports, sir?
Continuing on is the county housing and community development. It's open for comments about their disaster recovery funds, again, county got forty-four million dollars for disaster every funds in the plan that the county. Housing and community development has on their website, right now their action plan does not quite align, in my opinion, speaking with people in the city of Medical Lake, so if you get a chance, check it out. Throw your comments in there, they'll open till July fourteenth. Forty-four million dollars, a lot of money.
It is.
Yes, so, and then I went to a county environmental. Impact part of the comprehensive plan meeting with Scott Chesney, who was at the light, yeah, that was a great meeting.
Good.
We talked a lot about different factors that go into the critical areas ordinance and things like that for the critical, the environmental part. And some people proposed that potentially toxic groundwater should be considered a groundwater like a. A geologic hazard, which I thought was kind of an interesting concept, I don't know.
Yeah, it was for that two years ago, nobody was too concerned about it, but anyway.
Now, they are now, guaranteed, there was quite, quite a lot of people. At the sheriff's office. And then I also mentioned that it seemed weird that we have a UGA north of the city where we can't build because the base is right there where we could potentially.
Well said.
Like on Spirit Lake where we can get people off septic, hopefully in the off city water, and hope on fire hydrants as well. To the county, just want to let people know that especially because Lisa's here, so she knows that there's some loudmouth city council member out there.
I appreciate your advocacy for us, no, it's really good, I appreciate that, also on the public comment. It closed on the fourteenth, the Board of County Commissioners meeting on July the fifteenth, you can sign up to testify, so if. You have, you can give written comment, but if you actually want to sign up and testify about the use of the forty-four million. Especially, we have trees, so we're having to have, just had a last little wind, blew some trees down, missed a house by about a foot. And it's someone who's not cleaned up their property, so we have, still have debris not cleaned up, trees that need to be mitigated. And other things that maybe the community feel, so they, they need to be. Voluptive about that and be sure that you get those things in writing and, and on the record, and so you can sign up to testify. Board of County Commissioners meeting on July fifteenth, I believe. So, sorry you spurred me on there, but yeah, I appreciate.
Wish I could be there, we're out of town that day.
Okay, thank you.
I'm done, thank you.
Councilmember Shaefer, finance met tonight, we reviewed claim warrants, everything good? That's all I have, thank you. Councilmember Spears.
Yeah, the STA CEO search has moved forward, so the selection committee has chosen a candidate to push forward. So now gets to the point where he has to meet public stakeholders. We get community feedback and see how Spokane at large feels about the candidate, so it's Carl Otterstrom. The Chief Planning and Development Officer. So he's been pushed forward and there is a meet and greet down at the Centennial Hotel, which is the tall one just north of the river on Washington there. On Tuesday, July eighth, from four to six. So if anybody would like to go and talk to Carl, there's going to be. Q and A, meet and greet, just kind of give him feedback and then later on we'll be receiving public comment. To see how the community sees about him, I think he's a strong candidate. I like working with him, so I think this is going to be a great move for the city.
Wonderful, thank you for letting us know about that.
Thank you.
You might want to share that on our, our social media outlets so that people will know that they can meet, meet Carl and ask questions if they want to.
Yeah, oh, and then sorry, we just came back from the Trey Cities.
Yes.
For AWC, the annual conference. It was very nice, I liked the, the wide selection of sessions they have, there was like six or seven different section, sessions. Most of the sessions are, they're presented by the other cities, right, so Cleo talked about their Main Street revitalization program, which was a lot like ours. It was a great opportunity to discuss like granting opportunities and just streamlining government and like. There was a nice session where all of the small cities, we got together as council members and talked about gripes and winds and, and. Common practices and stuff like that, so I would encourage anybody else, if you guys have time, next year I believe is in Spokane. So it's a three day event, two days really, the third day, Friday was like one session, we were done by like eleven. But the most important session.
It was, I'm sorry, it was our.
That was, that was, it was.
They saved this for last because we were best, they did that.
And it was double long, it was great, it was, it was two hours.
And it was full, I thought for sure, there'd be like five people in there, like, it was packed.
Especially for Friday morning.
Yeah.
But, yeah, there's vendors, there's a lot of people, what'd they say, a hundred and. Sixty attendees were brand new attendees this year. And it's a large cross section, you get to meet tons of people from tons of different cities and just talk about random things. It is a great experience for networking, there's a huge resource that we could draw on AWC and just with calling other cities, so.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Maxwell.
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilmember Olson.
No report, Your Honor.
Okay. Okay, very good. My report, I was going to say, we went to the AWC conference, it was very good, I had attended. Over the year of. The last twelve months, attended something called Wasseli, it is a, a group and any elected officials can take part in it if you are, so the council member or mayor. Any city that's part of the Association of Washington Cities, it's through the Ruckleford Center, and they have a really great team that is put together, this training is on collaborative approaches to things and. Anyway, it is just a fantastic program, so I had completed that and they have another round open, if you are interested in doing that, you meet about. Maybe six times during the year and then you collaborate with other members, so we could join a team with like Cheney and Airway Heights, but it's usually about a team of three. And I had Mayor Comiscus and Councilmember. And mine just went blank, my good friend Jennifer Morton, so the three of us are on that together and it was, it was valuable. So if you're interested in learning more about. How cities are working together and it's really to train us to move away from sharp bipartisan, you know, and to realize that we all really have, are just people that want to do good things and so anyway. Just encourage, if you want to know more about that, let me know, I'll make, help you make that connection, I was appointed to the AWC Board of Directors and so I'll be serving there. I was just recently appointed to the State Emergency Management Council, that's advisory to the governor, so I really am honored by those two things because I think they have a strong voice. For Medical Lake and for the region, so that's all my report, thank you. Everyone, it's no report, Mr. Wetherson.
Welcome to the new main council, a couple of things. I want to share my sentiments about the AWC Annual Conference as well, it's always a good time, really is, the focus on inspiring sessions, which they had plenty of, I learned. Really pertinent information on government's use of artificial intelligence. And funding strategies and tourism, like it's all really pertinent, real now today stuff, so. Next year it is in Spokane, I think it's twenty-third to twenty-sixth of June. And so without needing overnight accommodations, you can get, you can register for a single day, or you can register for the whole conference, there's. Networking breakfasts and lunches and, and receptions and they just do that networking, connecting with other elected officials in similar sized cities or cities that have similar interests and. Just hearing what's going on and recognizing that we really have more alike than we have not alike and, and there's some great resources who are happy to help with the lessons they've learned. And then, yeah, the annual meeting as well, which was kind of nice, they were talking about their strategic plan, they have a three-year strategic plan in place and had a nice annual report that helps. Helps me think about how we can present information related to our city to our public and it was a good time. Another item I'd like to let you know about is our Coney Island Park Dock, the park will be closing next Monday, the seventh of July. So that we can begin shoreline restoration, that portion will happen first and then. There's a little more coordination of equipment to get in to get the fixed pier and the dock installed, so, but that will follow, but the park is scheduled to be closed until that project is complete, so. Starting next Monday, the seventh of July, the Coney Island Park will be closed for construction of the Coney Island Park Dock project.
I think Councilmember Pritchard has a question.
Yeah, I was just curious, people they asked, is there, when they redo that, there was a. Potential in the future, they might make boat access, like almost more ramp that goes down as opposed to just assault columns, is that happening now or?
What, so no, right now, what I think with the potential for boat access was that there's different apparatuses that can be added to the piers and the dock to allow for easier boat. Launching.
Like kayaks and paddles.
Yeah. That's, that's what I'm aware of, but all options could be explored, but right in this project, it's just going to be a stabilization of the shoreline, we've got some erosion issues where. The water gets through those big boulders and just pulls away the earth and big holes result, and so we've had to fill those a few times, so this will shore all that up. And then, yeah, get the pier ready to go.
Sure, sure.
Sure, boy, you said dad jokes.
Just can't.
Tonight, that's like a two for two.
Lastly, I want to let you know that it's Independence Day week, so this Friday is the Fourth of July. Thursday, we have Linger at the Lake, our second concert of the season, should be great, Soul Proprietors, one of the most popular bands from last year, they really put on a good show. There would be fireworks pending Fire Chiefs Authority, you know, want to pay attention to that weather pattern. Fortunately, the temperatures look like they're going to come down a little bit, but usually. Weather cools down, that is accompanied with wind, so we'll see what happens, but we're hoping for the best, should be a great show, great weather. And fireworks to follow and City Hall will be closed on the Fourth of July for the holiday. And then the Community Yard Sale is scheduled for the fifth and sixth, so we should have some good traffic coming into town and. If you're looking for anything, don't go too far, because the Community Yard Sale will be this weekend.
And just to note that staff have put together a, an electronic map of all the. Yard sales that, that want to be included in that map and we'll be sharing that out on Facebook so that people can click the link and. Find your dot and go spend money, so. Go find some treasures.
And that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me?
What was the, the date of that again?
Of the yard sale?
Yeah.
The fifth and sixth.
Saturday, Sunday.
This weekend, yeah, this next weekend.
Still time to register if you need to get your dot on the map, contact City Hall and we'll take care of that.
Appreciate that, also the other thing I want to say about AWC, just. I learned so much about all they do for us, but they've helped us so much with their legislative agenda too. And so they're very keenly aware and they're already putting their legislative agenda together, as are we. And so if you have thoughts about that, but we'll, we'll talk about it at retreat too, but also just I'd be thinking that, you know, here we are, bad budget season again and, you know. Never ending, so anyway, thank you, Sunny, for your report.
And I apologize, your wonderful announcements right there, it's reminded me that Steve and I, Steve Cooper, the wastewater treatment director and I are doing a geo walk on August sixth. At five o'clock.
Where, you mean at Waterfront Park?
Waterfront Park, yeah, it's about two or three hours, two and a half hours. And Steve's going to be there this time, which makes it one of the best ones of the year. We do quarterly.
You're mad scientists, thank you. Thank you so much.
Time's up.
Any other questions for. Sunny, okay, we'll move on then, Lisa Rodriguez, city planner, have a staff report.
Hey, good evening, thanks so much for allowing me to give you an update on our comprehensive plan update. You remember this little theater deal that I gave you last time, we're concluding phase one. Which is the idea phase where we ask people, our community, what do you love about Medical Lake? And the main form that we did that in is a survey called Pulse of the Community. So we had that on our website, Facebook, it went out in the conversation dot communities newsletter, the community newsletter that goes in our utility. Bill, and then we handed out flyers at Founder's Day. So I got a minute to talk about Founder's Day, I know I saw some of your faces there, but if. I found it quite successful, this is the third year that Sunny and I have set up a tent and second year for stickers, but every year is better. This year, we even had our city logo and name on the tent, so that. Last year, we had the tent, but we didn't have the, the name yet, we had some great graphics, some infographics about. Our community profile and capital projects that have happened recently or will be upcoming. And one for the comprehensive plan and all those. Plans that go into the comprehensive plan and those should be on the website, I just checked, but I think my phone, I need to delete the cookies because it doesn't show me the new stuff, so. If it's not on the website right now, those graphics that we might have missed, they will be soon. So also, the Founder's Day, Sunny and I staffed and then we had the mayor and two of our. Planning commissioners help do a shift there of Carl Munson and Kevin Tuig, so that was really great that we had people there to help out and. It was, it was nice, we handed out stickers, that's always the, the way to get people to come over and talk to us. And then we had linger at the lake flyers and of course the survey flyers, it was a good day. So back to the, the survey, the Pulse of the Community survey, we ended up, it closed on Monday the twenty-third. And it had been open about a month and we had seventy-seven respondents for that one, which I thought was pretty good. And I was trying to get a summary for you tonight, but I didn't quite get that finished. I will get it done soon and send you an, an email with it, it's about twenty pages, so some of you might not have been happy about me printing all that out. But I can always get your favorite copy if you prefer, but there's a lot of, of good comments there that you can read through in there, but just to summarize, you know, we. The survey started with the strategic plans. Vision and mission statements and we asked people, do you agree with these, and the vast majority did. And then when we asked, what would you like to keep, what would you like to change, et cetera. Most people, as you can imagine, say what they love about Medical Lake is our small town feel. And some of them expanded on that a bit. And people would like to see more businesses in town, not surprising, especially downtown. And then probably their biggest concern is uncontrolled growth and crime, which. Was also not surprising, but so that's the most general summary for, for that, but I'll get even more detailed summary as soon as I get that finished up. So there was actually a second survey and it was our communication preferences survey, so that was in part for the comp plan, but in part for communication in general for the city. That one we had a hundred and one responses, you didn't have to write as much in that one, so maybe people were more willing to fill that one out. But that one, once again, I didn't get the, the full summary finished, but just generally, we seem to be heading in the right direction. People seem to be getting most of the information we're sending out, they seem to be confident about what they're receiving, that it's factual. But we just need to keep heading in that directing, direction, because not everyone knows that we have text alerts, not everyone is checking the website or knows about the Facebook page, so we'll just continue. In that positive direction. Another thing we're doing, which is just sort of a, a side activity is the question of the week on Facebook, so I don't know if you're Facebook users. But each week we've been posting a question and just letting people respond to that and I'm very happy to say people have been positive, like there hasn't been any. Trash talking or anything like that, so that is really great, I will get around to summarizing those, but you can find those on Facebook yourself. And we'll just continue to do that, but really good comments, lots of good ideas coming from that.
As council, seeing the questions out there on Facebook, I don't know who's following that, but I thought maybe if you give us a little. Idea of the kinds of questions that have been asked so far.
Yeah, one that got a lot of responses, not surprisingly, is what would you do to up the curb appeal in Medical Lake? Oh, and I just realized that was also one of the things in the Pulse of the Community of more pride and ownership, so basically property maintenance. Is one of the biggest things, but there are also lots of good ideas with that, the last question that we asked was more simple, we just wanted to know. How often people were using the trail around the lake, so I guess I just lots of good information and then we can build on that, follow up with questions we might have from those responses.
So is the city, the city employees use it more often than most people or?
The trail, uh, no, I mean, you should look at the responses, quite a few people use it very regularly, yeah, and I certainly do, four days a week normally, yeah. So it, it happens to coincide that we had two grants that were also finishing up with this end of phase one. So those grants were from the state and they all had to do with this work that we have been doing for the update. The first is the, it's called climate resilience, but that was the money we used for mitigation plan and our crisis communication plan. And then the other grant was our periodic update grant. And the deliverables that we provided on that were our work plan, our public participation plan. Our land capacity analysis and then a couple of checklists, so one is critical areas, but the other is this. Very long checklist, which basically. We checked to see if we are currently meeting or need to update either the comp plan or our municipal code to meet changes that in state law. So that was a little bit painful to do, but needed, so we know how much work we need to do to accomplish all that. But we got all that submitted and our invoices and everything and the state was completely happy and we got all our money last week, so. That was wonderful, the due date was actually yesterday, but we got everything ahead, so that was really exciting. And the periodic update grant, that is actually, we have another year, actually eighteen months of that, so we'll get additional funding. And that's because these are mandated, required, you know, state mandates, and so they give us money to accomplish that. So we have another eighteen months that we'll get grants from the state in order to finish this project. So the one thing I mentioned on that was our land capacity analysis, so I did do the final land capacity analysis. Should be on our website, and I had, like I said, I just checked, but I think my phone, I didn't delete the cookie, so nothing's showing up that should be there. But a land capacity analysis is a county. Well, kind of a state and county requirement is an exercise where we have to analyze. How much population we can accommodate as a city, so I'm not going to go through every little detail, but just generally speaking. We get a population allotment from the county, so the state gives the county a population and the county gives us a population. And the population, they asked us to accommodate in the next twenty years is only two hundred and forty-four people. And the reason it's so small is because the timeframe they used for. Determining like our percentage of growth was twenty-ten to twenty-twenty-three and it looks like our population went down because the state. Stopped counting one of the institutions in our population and generally the population of the state has declined, so in twenty-ten. Twenty-nine percent of our population were at the state institutions and now nine percent. So it made us look like we decreased, we haven't really, we just didn't have big growth, so we get the small number. And then we look at our property that's available, either vacant or underdeveloped. And we analyze all that and determine what we can accommodate in the next twenty years and we do. Like we take away publicly owned land, we take away land that's underwater or covered with wetlands or solid rock or steeply sloping. And then, so what we got after we did all that, oh, and a market factor, we subtract thirty percent, and this is all methodology that's given to us by the county. We subtract thirty percent because at any given time, not all property is really available for, for development or redevelopment. So that gave us two hundred and ninety-three potentially units. Which our average household size per the Office of Financial Management is two point five four people per household, which is seven hundred and forty-four people. So the conclusion of this exercise is that, yes, we can certainly accommodate two hundred and forty-four people. But in the conclusion, and we submitted this to the county, we wanted to state that. We were given a small amount, we can certainly accommodate that, but we are well set for providing needed housing in the region. And that's why we're still advocating to keep part of our UGA up to the north, so right now it's five hundred acres, we want to keep two hundred acres. And then looking at the land to the east between the city and Silver Lake in order to help with the water, the sewer, the transportation. Connections that are needed through there, so that is the conclusion of the, the land capacity and I can also.
I just want to add too that we had a UGA area south of Lake Line, which basically is too far. So that has been taken out because it really isn't buildable for us, it's, it's too far to run sewer and water and so on, so anyway. So that's coming out, that was just kind of, I don't know how it got there, but. We did point out to the county that, you know, the city of Medical Lake also had anti-growth strategy and now we're not necessarily pro-growth, but we're pro-improvement and we do want to be part of the regional solution. For housing that we can provide that fits in with all the minerals and, and is the right balance, so.
So I can actually, I'll email that document also when I send out those surveys. I will provide paper copies for anyone who'd like it. So basically Doc concluded, or concludes phase one and we're on to phase two, which is the concept phase, which is refining the vision and the values of our community. And that will start with our steering committee meeting next week. So excited to start the new phase. So, any other?
No, it's a heavy lift, I appreciate all your work. Council have any questions about where we're at in the process? Okay, I think, thank you, thank you, Lisa. Move on to workshop discussion, the social media public records software, we had talked about this a little in the past and boss has been doing some work on that, so.
You mean mayor and council? So we're on the heels of the email archive software that we improved two meetings ago. And so we're in the continued effort to shore up our public records retention and this area is in social media and website archival. So, you know, we don't have a ton of social media, but we are required by state law to retain anything that is a public record. And that goes down. Um, and that goes down to every single comment made on any post, um, including the metadata that goes along with it. Um, so essentially, uh, in order to be in compliance with Washington state law. We're looking at uh options for uh website and social media archival software. Um, in our pursuits, um, we wanted to bring this as a workshop because uh it wasn't previously discussed when we were budgeting. So we also, uh, this would end up with a software service agreement, so we just wanted to feel out where council is at with the price tag. Um, so essentially, uh, between the four options that we looked into, there's. Uh, a variety of options that, you know, are kind of the the top end, the low end, uh, but we believe uh somewhere between twenty five hundred and. Uh, five thousand five hundred, we can find a solution that works well for the city. Um, and also, you know, uh, can get uh some necessary services that. Uh, improve the ability to to navigate this social media. Yep, annual, um, so uh the discussion today is to just feel out how uh council feels about that. Price tag, um, and about uh pursuing that option, and. Um, if so, we'll we'll do some additional research to figure out which vendor would be the best choice for the city, based on the um purview of council. And then uh bring that forward as a as a resolution.
Your cost and I were discussing this uh again this afternoon and um. The twenty five hundred dollar per year um covers the basic. What we have to do, we we have to by state law and by WAC do certain things to retain our records. Um, and to manage our um social media website, um, and uh archive those, and so. That's the bare bones of price tag, and the fifty five hundred is the um other things it could do. So as we were talking, um, we realized that there's two parts to this. The social media, the bare bones part, eh, the twenty five hundred is the archives capt- capturing those things off the website. Social media puts them in buckets, makes them searchable, so that's something we we're not really real able to do well right now. Um, and so to make sure that we are able to provide all the public records we're required to. That's the archive part, the social media part is the part that's above the twenty five hundred, um, and so. Uh, the other thing that the social media element can do is it can. We can line up postings and it'll put those out over a period of time, so you can say we're put, send this out on Tuesday and then on Friday and. Like or linger at the lake, we can put all those in for the whole season and it'll just post on Facebook at the right time. Um, and so it will save a lot of staff time, um, and it's so it includes that posting management and then all communications and so that's that. That above the twenty five hundred, um. I was looking at it this way, that if we looked at the about five thousand, that's about four hundred and sixteen dollars a month. If you put that at the twenty twenty five dollar an hour person, that's about sixteen hours, so if you paid a person to do that. Um, that's not much, but this is a twenty four seven um availability, and so it's letting software do the work. Um, and the archiving uh burden on um. Our staff, but we're not able to meet the burden first of all, but the the social media becoming more and more prevalent as we're. Um, trying to attract businesses and tourism and, you know, promote our our festivals and things, so. Um, I was hoping council would consider um maybe up to the five thousand. And for one year, it's only four hundred dollars a month, and we could bring that back um at the next meeting, but. So that's kind of the discussion cost that I had today, so I wanted to get your thoughts and. And uh hear your. Comments, concerns.
I actually went to a session at AWC that talked about. Uh, retention burden of social media.
Right.
So um, and a lot of places, like, you know, cause like, like you said, the meta metadata.
Yeah.
So some places are just falling back on screenshotting, especially if. Eh eh and it's, they're like, well, that's not legal, right? Uh, cause you do have to provide it all, and the the problem, the great thing about the software is so. Even if it's like a one-year-old post and then somebody adds another post onto it, another comment onto it. You you still have to go back and update all of that data.
Right.
And so software like this will do it automatically, we don't have to troll it. Facebook has a really bad habit of hiding things randomly.
Right.
And so, um. These softwares, then we don't have to pay somebody to just essentially troll all of our stuff.
Yeah.
Um, the question I do have is, so is this price based on? Uh. Like if we got additional social media like accounts, so like, um. If for some reason we wanted wastewater to have a Facebook account, right, if they wanted to post a bunch of dates or. Pictures or whatever, you know, if we add additional bandwidth to this, does that, does it impact the price?
Um, so depending on. I don't, I don't think he wants that, but, no, um, so.
Full of the day or something, I don't.
Yeah.
That'd be fun.
Uh, most of the options, uh, the, it was like a one to five, so if you have five or less uh accounts.
Okay.
It's included in the price, um, so, you know, uh. For the most part, that should be fine, we, you know, I kind of left a buffer in with some of the. Vendors that I talked to, like, hey, just in case we get one or two extra accounts, like, what, you know, can you price me at that, and. Um, so theoretically, you know, we should be good, but um, but there's, of course, if we go beyond that, yeah, there will be a price increase, but.
Cause the second half of the session was administrators talking about. Having difficult conversations with our council members about posting on Facebook, especially in official capacities, right?
Right.
And so, um, some cities are going to, we all have our own email, right? So I can make another Facebook, sometimes it'll block you automatically, cause it'll think you're making a duplicate account, right, so it's against the terms of service. Um, but, um, so if if somebody did wanna post officially. Right, somebody wanted to take over all our culprits mantle and actually, right, comment on Facebook. Um, would we, so we would potentially have the ability to add more accounts?
Uh, yeah. Say something about that though too, and that is that. There should only be one official statement from the city on the city's Facebook page. If you post um on your own Facebook page, you're required to make the statement, and I want. We need more training, but the statement that this is my personal position and, um. You know, and you can put that as your personal position, but you cannot make a statement for the city as a council member, if. It's a collective voice that makes one statement, and that's done on the city's uh Facebook page. You personally can, but you have to always put the disclaimer, this is my own personal opinion or my own personal thought or my own personal knowledge. This is not on behalf of the city. And we could get in trouble, council members and myself can get in trouble, speaking for the city, so.
So another.
Oh, seriously, so along the same lines, um, all my students say that they wanna see what their grandparents do and they check Facebook. But then they usually go comment on like Instagram or something like that, so. Is that something that potentially the city, if even this money could have like an Instagram account, it's just automatically.
So, uh, no, absolutely, and actually, when I did these quotes, I anticipated having an Instagram account, um, so, cause we had. Talked about that and and the potential for that and.
You say after five, like we could.
I don't know anything about it, sorry.
We have one, and you, we could do like X and whatever, you know, if you, so I think of the five is kind of.
For most of these, yeah, I mean, it's. Oh, depending on which vendor we go through, and you know, that could be something, if that's important to council, like, hey, let's, you know, if this is the price point and this is how many accounts, then. Um, then when we go shopping, we can make sure that we, um, you know, uh, shop for the appropriate amount of of accounts, so.
It sounds like a lot more work, I don't know how it works, I'll be honest with you, but.
Well, I will.
The L O B you can do, you schedule one and it lasts it out to all of them, so that would be.
To the mayor's point, yeah, one of the, you know, kind of the higher end of the price point here included those features, so that's also why. We wanted to approach it, uh, council in that way is like, hey, do you, you know, do you feel that it's important to include? Uh, those features that would make it a lot easier for staff to go about posting. Um, so they're not having to log into Facebook and then post it and then log into Instagram and duplicate everything. That there were, there are capabilities, um, that I can, that can include, so that's. You know, if the price point here, the fifty five hundred seem and be, you know, seems appropriate, then, you know, we'll pursue options that. Um, best fit the city's needs and 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 see what we can come back with.
So are all your providers offering the same service? I mean, you don't have like, uh. The one might be a low ball, just cover some, or are they all full meal deals?
Uh, they're very similar, I mean, there's some that offer certain things that others don't, um. You know, there's like small features here or there where, um, there's like, uh, one I just did a demo for yesterday. Um, they have the ability to flag, um, you know, uh, people who post on on accounts, so that if they post, you see it immediately. Or if certain profanity is sa- uh said on your account, that it flags us immediately and sends us communication, and. So, you know, features like that, where it's it's beneficial to kind of be on top of it, um, those would be included in kind of the higher end. Uh, but it's, it's hard to say they all have the same offerings, but they will, you know, when we go to. Uh, shop around, we'll make sure that the priorities stated tonight are.
Some things we don't need, other things we do.
Yeah, yeah.
Reference.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, do you know what we don't need?
Um, there were certain things that uh are a little bit more comprehensive than we need, like there was, I'm I'm trying to remember which one it was, um, but. There was one vendor that um was a little bit more robust than we need, as they're like, oh, you can, you know, have twenty accounts and, you know, and it was. Um, so to me, I'm like, okay, maybe we don't need everything that they're offering for the price point, um, you know, but, uh. Some of these other ones where they have less accounts but more features, and so it's, um, it's hard to say, but, um. You know, there's certain things we, um, that are just more robust than we need feature-wise, when we only have, you know, five or less accounts. So we don't need to be, um, you know, searching all these things and it's hard to explain, but.
But also, we don't, we're not looking to set up. A brand new system and a whole bunch of pages and a whole bunch of feature, you know, we just, we need to take care of what we have. And then expand our capacity enough to meet what we wanna do. I think communications is probably the piece that can go on forever, when you start talking about communications, and it's like, do you want us to. You know, do graphics for you, do you want us to do design, do you want us to, you know, and so I. I imagine communications is usually the part that just mushrooms quickly, but, um. I think that, uh, when I talked to Cost today, I was thinking, well, let's. Um, if we can get some direction from you, like you're doing, giving him tonight, and then bring that back. And we can even do another workshop if you want and say, here's the. You know, two or three we have and the features that in the price point, and, you know, after our discussion tonight, then we can then decide. Um, who we wanna choose, and maybe it was a chance also to vet some of the the companies themselves, who else is using them and, you know, so.
Do we have anybody that's more local or are these?
Um, I don't recall if any of them are local, um, but, let's see. Roxanne, do you recall if any of them were from Spokane or near?
No, I think that local comes to mind of just, you know, civic plus being just.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just like get anybody local better, you know, uh, reasonable shot.
Yeah, no, I'll keep that in mind, we'll include that in our search.
They're happy, right?
Yeah, right.
Are the locals happy?
If they're local, then good. No, thank you, I'll stick that back into our search, yeah.
Sure, thanks, Ted.
And I probably shouldn't give feedback on social media, cause I don't exactly know what happened, but you have, how many people right now are working on like putting up stories or?
Uh, so it's a combination of three, uh, be- between the website and and social media, it's uh Roxanne Colton and then Kylie, they all kind. Um, take that on, yeah.
But do you know about how many hours per se they might work on?
Um, it depends on the project, um, it depends on if somebody comes in.
Public records is included in this, so it's continuous. Yeah, and then also with all the park and rec programming, all that goes out on social media, it's always in constant flux and change, so every day we're working on something. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah.
Oh, yes, sir.
Uh, I'm sorry to interrupt, but.
Uh, please.
P R A litigation on a daily basis, and I just wanna say, very refreshing to see. It's taken so seriously, I wish some of my other clients uh did the same, so, yeah, that's very important. Uh, it's ever evolving and taking advantage of resources like this.
Thank you, Tom, so much, yeah, it's a big risk.
Yes.
Yeah, I I think we'd be willing to spend, I personally, my my opinion is. I'd be willing to go towards the higher end, especially if it saves up some more.
Right.
Like you're talking about the indexing, I know that's a huge deal, being able to make it searchable. Cause that was like a third of the discussion was what search terms do you use?
Yeah.
Um, when you get public records requests and like. Clarifying with the person making public records, like actually sending them, these are the words we're gonna search for, is that okay? Yes, that's okay, and it comes back, um. So if it's gonna save our staff time, cause I know we had a that discussion in the retreat about making sure that. Us being more communicative with uh, so the public isn't gonna overburden our staff, right, so I think this is a great mitigation.
Thank you.
I think we need one where it's, we get the base services, but we also have room to grow into it as we expand a little bit with. The services that the city provides, so we might get one now that seems a bit too robust, but not. Over the top, but with the ability to just grow into it a little bit.
Yeah, good point, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
That's a little room to grow a little.
Yes.
So, great. Any other comments or anything you'd like, hey, the, thank you, um.
Yeah.
Cost, we look forward to seeing what you bring back to us, and it sounds like probably another workshop is.
Feedback.
Yeah, it's probably appropriate, so we can look at numbers and.
Yeah.
Systems and then we'll, then we can give a resolution after that, so.
Yep, got it.
Thank you, sir. All right. Good discussion, thank you, council, it's really helpful to get your feedback. Um, action items, uh, we have the consent agenda, approval of the June seventeen twenty twenty five minutes, says council had opportunity to review the minutes. And are there any changes or corrections to the minutes?
Move to approve, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed, thank you, minutes approved, and then approval of July one twenty twenty five claim warrants numbered uh five two. Six five six through five two six eight nine in the amount of one hundred sixty four thousand ten dollars fifty six cents.
Move to approve, second.
Thank you, any discussion, I know councils will receive that finance packet, any questions? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Passing unanimously, thank you. Uh, ballot measure for and against, um. Committee appointments, so as you know, uh, we've been talking about this for a bit, that the advisory vote is going to be on the November. Uh, ballot, and uh it is asking the citizens, which, um, as long as I've lived in the city, which is only short fifty years. Um, every year fireworks is a big discussion, and then it comes, uh. Why doesn't, why can't we just vote on it? All this, all the decades, why can't we just vote on it, so now's a chance to let the community vote on it, which I think is really great. It's non-binding, um, just putting this on the record, it's not binding, so, um, there will be committees appointed. Uh, there are four banning fireworks, there's a committee that will be appointed against banning fireworks. And so they'll work on that for a short period of time with legal counsel draft their statements. That will go into the voter's pamphlet, um, and be on the ballot, and so when that comes back. Uh, that will be of interest to council, because then you can take action or no action, um, but you're certainly not compelled to. But, um, the citizens will know where the majority stand, and you'll know, and we'll s- see what that looks like. So I would like to take the opportunity then, I did receive some requests to be appointed, um, and so, um. The committee for banning. Uh, fireworks, uh, will be Lonnie Henderson and Shirley Mikey. Uh, the committee against banning fireworks will be Nate Robinson and Don Mayfield. And so we will send letters of appointment to those folks tomorrow and get them quickly scheduled to, so they can start meeting and, uh. Crafting their message, and like I said, they'll be, um, working with the lawyer independent, so. The city or not even city staff are are assisting them with that, it's independent, uh, because it's so important, those voices are heard without any. Um. Tainted. Interaction. So, um. I would like, uh, to, um, get council's approval for the appointment of those four. Um, people to work on those committees, Lonnie Henderson, Shirley Mikey, Nate Robinson, and Don Mayfield.
Move to approve, second.
Any discussion about that? Hey, all in favor? Any opposed? Hey, thank you, council. No public hearings, no resolutions or ordinances, no executive session, no emergency ordinances. Upcoming items, I see nothing listed, if you wanna be in touch with, um, Sunny, um. If you have some things that you would like to see on an agenda. Um, also, this is the last opportunity then for interest to say that co- citizens' comment, we did receive a written comment. Um, so I will, uh, put that on the record, um, comment from, uh, Tammy Roberson, and. Subject is written comments for city council meeting one July twenty twenty five, each of you have a copy of that, that's for your review. And, um, just have to put that on the record, and those minutes will become, um, part of the record. Those minutes, those comments will become part of our minutes. Thank you. Uh, anybody have interested citizen comment, this is your opportunity to speak to, uh, council, anyone online? Uh, anybody have interest to citizen comment, this is your opportunity to speak to, uh, council, anyone online or in. The house. Second call. Okay, third call, hearing none, we'll move on then to the conclusion of the meeting.
Oh, the conclusion there.
Second.
All right, thanks. Meeting, meeting concluded.
Happy for it, I'm ready.